Molweni. Sanbonani. Good morning. We... Sizokala umxanga no wetu. Jengayo yonge imixanga no. Kakulumeje. We are going to sing. We are going to start our meeting like we start all government meetings. Sizobona.
The national anthem. Can we all stand up?
Siyabonga kakulu.
Thank you very much.
Masibingelele. Kubantu bakwaklimba.
We would like to greet people from Waklimba.
Nabobonge abasuka kwez nindao.
And all people who came from other places, other areas.
Amakosi endao.
Um, amakosi from this area.
Political parties ze zikoyo.
Amaklimba ze politigi akona.
Nabobonge abantabascho inileyo.
And everyone else who is present here today.
Siyakoli sakakulu ukubakungo na sidkala yongesiskat.
We would like to apologize for starting at this time.
Ibe yinga ki esinga kange sikwazi ukuisombulula.
This was a problem that was beyond our knowledge that we could not resolve.
Si mulela noguti niye nanyameze la nasilinda.
We thank you for your patience as you waited for us.
Siyakoli sakwakon.
We humbly apologize for this.
We are here as the portfolio committee of public works and infrastructure. My name is Nolita Ndobongwana. The chairperson of the portfolio committee. Diamba namalungu ale committee.
I am here with committee members.
They are going to introduce themselves.
As was a tool.
Eh, ndisuka eh Eastern Cape.
I am from the Eastern Cape.
I am deployed by the African National Congress in parliament.
E parliament in sunyue African National Congress.
I will then allow the members to introduce themselves.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Samantha Graham Murray. I am a member of the Democratic Alliance. And I am also a member of the portfolio committee on public works and infrastructure. I come from a town called Hrafrenet in the Eastern Cape. And I'd like to just echo the chair's sentiment. I'm sorry you've had to wait, but thank you so much for giving up your Sunday to be with us.
Molweni.
Sanbonani. Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. My name is Madeleine Hicklin. I'm also a member of the Democratic Alliance. I'm proud to serve on this portfolio. I hail from Midrand in Chaoteng. And I echo everyone's sentiments. Thank you so much for joining us today.
Sanbona eh World One.
Good morning, World One. And all others who came here to World One, I greet you all. My name is Lizzie Shabalala. I am an ANC member. I am a member of this committee. I come from Lady Smith. Stateville. For the last 20 years. But I was deployed here in Durban for the last 10 years. My constituency was Amanzimtotti. I am happy to be here with you. Because it's like I'm at home.
Before 1994, sasi lagule groundi.
In 1994, we're at this field. We're here to celebrate our traditional leadership in this area.
Sanbona kaklumba.
Good morning, Waklimba. My name is Lindy Wemchobo. I'm a member of this committee. I come from Koksere Herikwara district. Most of all, I'm a member of the African National Congress. I have been sent to work in the National Assembly, deployed in the National Assembly. I am glad that you are here today. Thank you. Good morning, everyone. I'm Sharon Van Scalvik. A member of the African National Congress. Deployed to the National Assembly. As part of this portfolio committee. And I'm from Uppington in the Northern Cape. Thank you very much.
Sanbonani.
Good morning.
My name is Wayne Thring. I am a member of the African Christian Democratic Party. Representing the ACDP in the Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure. In the National Legislature. I reside in Kwazulu Town, not far from here, in Pinetown. And it's good to be with my home folk again. God bless you.
Thank you very much to the committee members.
Amongst us, we have our colleagues coming from the... Coming from the parliament. And the provincial legislature. And councillors of Tequini and surrounding municipalities. We have MPs, Honorable Diane Barnard. From the DA, we have Honorable Megan Chetty. We have Honorable Tim Brutusen. They are our colleagues from the National Parliament. Eh, we have eh MPLs. Honorable Martin Mayor. We have councillors. Eh, they are all from the DA, those that I'm going to read now. Councillor SBC. Councillor Mso. Councillor Mackenzie. Councillor Daniels. Councillor Van de Berg. And Councillor Ampad. Um, we have eh councillor from the ACDP. Councillor Esop. Thank you. We have councillors. From the ANC. Eh, we have Councillor Mgonyama. We have Councillor Ngomalo. We have Councillor Makanya. We have Councillor Mguenge. Eh, we also have our host. Eh, the mayor of this area where we are. The first citizens of Waklimba. All deployed by the ANC. We have Councillor Mkize. Our host. Eh, you are all welcome, honourable members. Eh, before we came here. We went to undabezita. Ungosumlaba.
As the person who owns this area.
Who is leading. Will respect our traditional leaders. So we also acknowledge him even though he is not here. Because we know that all of us, when we are here, we are his subjects. Because this is his land. Eh, we will also acknowledge other traditional leaders if we are informed. We are here to seek your views. Or eh, I've been informed that eh, sinaye u unkosu ulthuli, ndabezita, you can just raise your hand.
And eh, si para me, si unkosu, we can't ask the chief or the unkosu to stand up. We thank you for your presence here. Thank you very much.
Eh, we are also amongst us.
Induna. The induna of Amabutso. We respect the culture. Thank you very much. We thank you. For being present among us.
We are here as the portfolio committee. To seek your views and comments. On expropriation bill number 23 of 2020. Eh, this bill. Seeks to repeal Act Number 63 of 1975. The Expropriation Act. This act was adopted by the previous government, the apartheid government. As we all know that the laws of the previous government only protected a minority few. So this bill that we're bringing to you seeks to repeal such an act. This bill also provides in instances where expropriation of property. May be done for public purpose and public interest. And when necessary with nil compensation. Also, this bill seeks to ensure. That there are uniform ways and standards. Of expropriating property. For public purpose and public interest. By all the expropriating authorities. The expropriating authorities. Are the municipalities. Are the departments. And we talk about public purpose. We are talking about government.
We're talking about the government expropriating certain property. So that the people. Will be able to receive something from that. We are going to tell you what we mean by that.
Building houses for people. That is public interest. Building schools. Municipality, constructing access roads. That is public purpose. I'm raising this because there are people that are saying government is going to take their houses. There is no such thing. We are living in a country that has laws. So our government cannot do that. That is why we are consulting you in this bill. Unlike the laws that were made before. In which you were not consulted. You are free to raise your view. In any of the 11 official languages. Ground rules. You only have three minutes. You introduce yourself. You tell us which political party or civic organization or religious formation that you're coming from. If the three minutes is over. We will indicate and stop you. The speaker on the floor has to be respected by all of us. So whatever that he or she is speaking. Whether we like it or not. We must please respect him on here. Because we've started so late. We're going to take 20 hands. Eh, in the first round. And then eh, in the second round. We will take another 20 hands. Si funa uku eh acknowledge again.
We would like to acknowledge.
Oh, oh, unkosu umama.
We thank you very much for your presence here. Thank you.
We're starting now. Can we raise hands? The MPs are not allowed. They will have a chance to debate this in parliament. So they're just not going to speak. We started on that row. MPLs can raise their hands, but not the MPs. Siyakala ngale opamse sandla. Umusu konji westala uzenga apa. Yeah, they must come here. Obizwa ulenosbili nae opamse sandla. There is a hand there in the second row, yeah. Okay, eh, the third row.
We will come back to you in dunia maputo.
Any other hand this side because if we pass this side. Okay, we're coming to this side now. Councillor? Yes, and the one behind. You will indicate when the number is fine.
Simon Gubane okulayo.
My name is Simon Gubane. Members of parliament. Will councillors be allowed to comment because I cannot say differently between MPLs and MPs and councillors?
Lomtecho eh, uzo kwa in parliament.
This bill will be discussed in parliament.
So ama councillor avumilegile.
Therefore councillors are allowed.
And even members of the provincial legislature are also allowed.
Thank you so much, Induna.
We need five more. Okay, must join the two and even that one. And then eh, the last triple that will speak. Guzo amakosi eh tu. And the what councillor? The one who is hosting us, our mayor for today. Um, it's only three minutes. You introduce yourself to us. If, if you are coming from a political party. You tell us which political party. You are also allowed to say that I'm not presenting any political parties you, but only my view. Only three minutes.
Sanbon. Eh, ikamusboniswasbisi, ikantela de Democratic Alliance. Eh, gimswilushlalo ekuluma esha uguti aguzu utatwa eh imizi abantu. So being physically clarified, uki ushuti muupi lomhlaba lo, uzo butatwa. And usu identify yewe yini, ili parliament uki sisobestata lomhlaba onje, rengaliza teseli. Okusbili eh, uhlalo angas nomutindile yin maylanane intellectual property. Oma for example, kuba kwa numuuntu ozo kama na ma formulatise for imeti, nomi physics, noma yini, even the masters. Inhabe uhulumenunalo inilungelo, logo itata la oma formula is intellectual property.
My name is Councillor SBC. I represent the DA. I heard the chairperson saying it's not the people's property that will be expropriated. Um, I just want to find out whether has government identified that piece of land that will be expropriated. Secondly, I also wanna know if one's intellectual property, if someone has come up with a formula either for meds or for, for science, will the government also expropriate that?
My name is councillor Ramona McKenzie. Clearing issue with the bill is that the timeline stipulated to allow for situation where expropriation and possession of property can occur while the parties are still negotiating on the amount of compensation. This means that, in fact, effect, the owner will have lost their property but still be trying to negotiate compensation. And the owners to approach the court for assistance will rest with the expropriated owner instead of the expropriating authority. My question would be, how can you ignore the important process of negotiation in the committees? In the committee's opinion, does this not ignore the right to fairness as enshrined in the constitution? Thank you.
Speak. Uh, thank you honourable members and special hello to my former colleague from the Etikwene Council, the Honorable Thring. Uh, my name is Martin Mayer, I'm a member of provincial legislature where I serve on the agriculture portfolio committee as well as the human settlements portfolio committee. And I've also served on the public works, um, portfolio committee previously. I see that in this proposed bill, that abandoned land is, is one of the things that's being targeted. Now I have a big question and a big concern about this. In case it in, or let's start with Etikwene, as you drive from the city, there are empty buildings, abandoned land all over the place. The owner of this is actually the government, not private owners. So who are we going to expropriate this from? Are we going to expropriate government land for the government? Because the main break of these problems is, is, is public works, as one of my colleagues has pointed out. Public Works Department in this province owns thirty-three thousand parcels of land, of which many are unused open parcels of land. I don't even know how much National Department owns in this, um, in this province. The land is there, should we not start with the land already within the government's ownership before we start looking at private owned land? Um, the, the second thing that I just wanna raise as well is, if we're gonna talk about taking land for reform or for, for other projects, there's already been quite a bit of land taken in this province. And in our budget hearings, eh, budget speeches this week, we heard that another five billion rand is going to have to be spent for land that was already taken and projects that has now failed. So we now have to spend another five billion rand on making these projects succeed. So I think let's rather look at what we have, let's rather focus on, on the land that the government already owns before we start talking about private owned land. Thank you so much.
Sanbonani, ikamalam gumza, malam kwa lo, okostad, gi memba je A N C. Eh, benestrelo soguti, makulunya gomchawa. Uze kpegelere nawantu, lavawa fisa, egut babi, babi ne nda ozokya. Kotu afuti bawaz, bansebe tule nda ozokya le maplasin, bawaz ba, bazenzeli inka mengena yo kbon, ya wo. Ungabinje nda ozokya lo, egutabantu bashale, banga azba masere shele bazokya, ya wo. Bawaz ba babeni inka mengena kbon, ya wo.
My name is, my name is Msamo Kumalo. Thank you so much for the opportunity, I am just a member of the A N C. Uh, I, I, I would suggest that when we expropriate the land, rather when the land is expropriated, please accommodate farming for people, farming for locals, particularly for commercial farming, so that eh, they can be able to, to be financially viable and yet be sustainable. Thank you.
Sanbonani, uchozo farm gonyama lukulmayo, nguya pasu komaspala iheri kwa la ekokstat, ikinda wase pen lemon farm. Eh, edeng funuku cheka la ugu ti, inge, ebalo uhulume ni lomteto awocho ngosayo. Mtsa mbego uzotatiskatese ngaranani, ngobokta la ngubuse kantja halu. Indawestala gule ngubuse maplasin, yindawezna banigaz baz, abaitata ngisakatese uhulume no banjulut. Even umundese shonile, kunzi muta ngowatwa glonda, ngobumni gazwe farmer uchi indaweyaki. Kupotkele kuti akpu, umundara pume, afunelu yindaw, lasa outzeli selu akonu, kuti kubegwa itambola, ngobo maselulile mtsabili. Ogustatu, gune itingo, uzga uhulume ni, eh, uhulume ni azama omaspalo kutu funuku zese bandwi. Ngenglayo kuti indaw, esle zigiona, agione yetu, ino mni gaz, kuti, ina leon tutu, use ngasakwaz, ugena leon indaw. So inga agoke, beng funuku cheki kuti, inge, ebalo umteto uzotatiskatese ngaranani kral. Ngoba inlela ekselu ngai maplasin, inzima kakulu, oma ugnatwa agekunya, igyo buguisim, osabantu basiles guze maplasin. Nkabango kutu uhulume ni lae ngabele, asuge la tatele kwa na ngai, ngokshesh. Kumaja ngukuluma knezintesakiwe pen lemon. Kotu, ukyatwa laga lo kuti, uhulume ni uchi plaze, elka akkalkha, sonaw, lavabantu, akfuzi lo kuti ngabe bakela kliandaw. Kuluma ita leli, ngenezona, senkandolo, ngoba guu kuti giabam. Kotu abantu kese skati ndawokstala, na uhulume no azwa kuti saita obakela indawozokstala, ngoba waybon, nineteen thousand okstala, banas, ngabon.
Thank you so much, my name is Joseph Ngonyama, I am from Kokstat. All I wanted to check was that how long will government eh, take to implement this expropriation bill? Um, to pass this into law and actually execute it? Because those of us who are in the farms, we are experiencing diverse kinds of troubles and challenges. Our people can't even be buried in those farms, simply because a farmer who is the landowner is saying, "Not in my land." You can't bury your loved ones here. So we gotta go to somewhere else and try to find some place where people were not staying to bury. Thirdly, um, I also want to bring this to your light, that service delivery is being compromised, actually being hindered and delayed by some of these farm owners. Um, where government wants to bring in some services to people, but farms are not open, are not eh, accessible to that. So our people are experiencing a lot of problems there.
Uh, sanbona, my name is Pam Taylor, I'm from Kezomena ward twenty-nine in Durban. I'm a full member in Kokstat ring of A N C, I'm representing Dr. Easy Taylor Foundation. My first question is, um, as we're talking about land expropriation, is it including Ngonyama Trust or not? And so why we stepping ahead, looking for land expropriation whereas in Kezomena there's abundant land? And they're invading in this land without, the municipality has not built any houses for the people in this land. But now they want to step ahead to go and expropriate land where there is land that they cannot use, which is supposed to be used for the people, for the community. And so if you're also looking at eh, expropriating the Ngonyama Trust, I don't think that is proper, because it was meant to be there. So it has to be retained like that and they have to keep what it belongs to them. I thank you.
Gbingalela, ikamalam u rey wagango from the African National Congress. For us in the A N C, land reform eh, is not just about land reform. It means we will use land reform process to create productive activity, to create economic opportunity. We are, I'm, I want to argue that in all our deliberation, we should never ever drop the word "without compensation." We want to emphasize, ugu ti, nama ngabektuani, we can never compensate for the theft of land. As um, ababel chonchilumhlaba, they want us to remain, to believe. We want to suggest that eh, we submit that section eh, twenty-five, um, clauses one, four, five, six and nine should remain as they, as is, there should not be any changes. Clause two, we are making a specific submission there that says that maybe we need a new eh, clause that says subject to without compensation or nil compensation under conditions that are laid out eh, in a law of, of general applications. On clause three eh, in terms of the ama amendments, we want, um, just to, let me wrap it up by saying, please never drop the word "without compensation" or "nil compensation." Thank you.
My name is Ray Ngobo, I'm from the A N C, much was said in English, I'll only say just one line said in vernac. Says, "I want to emphasize that in this expropriation bill turned into, passed into, when it's passed into law, never drop the word 'without compensation.'" So in other words, we want expropriation as eh, passed into law without compensation. Thank you.
Eh, thank you, uzakele shabalala eh, ngyan bingalela, A N C. Eh, U section one twenty-eight of the bill set out mistaken circumstances under which land can be expropriated. Eh, but the word that, that is used, including, it can cause ama problems, it should be removed or deleted. Also one area that require clear attention is the absence of the process of due service, of relevant notices eh, to property owners residing in foreign eh, jurisdiction. This presents a clear practical and substantive eh, imitation of the bill. Thank you.
Eh, just before the speaker eh, we have been joined by our colleague again from the National Assembly.
Sispendesa, joina omonyo za wetu opumale paralame.
Honorable Sbong Seningobo from the DA.
Honorable Sbong Seningobo ofilaguti DA.
Thank you, honourable member.
Siya bo.
We have also been joined by ungosi ulhlewa from Toiane Traditional Council, uambanes nduna zake.
Sispendesa, join ungosi ulhlewa, uambanes nduna, together with his ndunas.
Siya bo.
Thank you so much.
Sanbona, kuluma, kuluma nozotwa, skosa na ukramga Ikopo. Kwa watfu, ngimeba ya wa A N C, lapanga kuma kwa na inda, we ni ege maplasin. Gizotanzo tanda, uku boanga, uhu lume ni asense, lego nukuti, bas tengele, imthaba, siban, basi maplasin, ngawa watfu. Kotu wa uhulume ni stengele, le umhlaba, ulo maplasila, ya wo. Arasa ngakwaz, egutapinda spe, ge enfu, ngalo kuti, akwaz, asosnikezinsa, xsebenza, lokba ra wampa belu, ngu, nde ningi, abantu be bengazas. Pele bezazu abelu. Kotu wa uhulume ni stengele, le umhlaba, asina, imalo kuti squaz, kuti scharle, pele aklekikira, abantu be pumalenda facebook. Umhlaba uhulume ni zesu, spukanga, spukanga njan, umhlaba ekbeni, arasa, snige lutu kuti squaz, kuti xsebenze, nanu kuti basu ekshopu, kuti, ma abenino, umhlaba, ngameni umhlaba, nu pate kanjan. Niya tela kuti uhulume ni, arasize, banas, siya tatu, uksenisumhlaba, abantu oma wetaba, sasebenze, ge makaya, wonge umuntu, umnuwa, wampa washiya, abantu be tenkuwa, akung, si male siya fisuksenisam, umhlaba njan, be tengele, ya bo.
My name is Zodas Kossane, I am from Ikopo, I am a member of the A N C. Eh, I, the area I come from is, is farmlands, I come from the farm. Eh, we just want to thank the A N C government for eh, intervening and buy eh, farms for us. Eh, I live in the, in the, in one of those farms. But unfortunately, government has not followed up to check on the progress and the viability of those farms. So we request that government comes back with follow-up to check on the progress, profitability and viability of these farms. Eh, because we are basically lacking resources for us and infrastructure to work the land. Thank you.
Sanbonani, ikamangut, Dennis Waramtalane, ngikamga eh ward seventy-six, emlas. Eh, ngimele email sector. Eh, ngilu ngale A N C. Eh, umuzo, ebengzoba na okala, okala ilu. Ngabe ilupi ulhelo, analu, uhulume ni ugu ti, asize, amatota, nama aba nomzani. Lavawa abase ndawenlizes, bizwa ngama hostel, mangese ibizwa ngama C R U S, ogu indawozokshala eh, imde. Before ngisakaso banjululu, ebektuwa, ma hostel, ebekshala amatota wot. Eh, ngifisukcheku kutige, bo na, ngabe ilupu kasa balchola uhulume ni, nde ngama R D Ps, bawachola kanjani, ngoba i, i olendenza, kuti, kuti ne gubane mchondolo eh, esaronde, le ndawezanga ma hostel, ngoba betwa funukcholu kasa lufu la uhulume ni, uzbakelu zin, ngoba manje bo na banagio. Eh, ogunye, eh, ngifisukwazi, ugu ti, ilupu ulhelo lukisa amatota lawane, inga angas, xbes, angena makaya, indafa eh, xalagliandaw. Uchoti, ahlelikolo, ngobe ngasena, li ka, uksuka inmakaya, ngabon.
My name, I greet you all, my name is Dennis Waramtalane, I'm from ward seventy-nine, itumlazi, I'm here from the A N C. I have two questions, my first question is, how can the government, is there a, a plan from the government to help men who live in hostels with their families? Um, for them to get R D P houses, because they can't afford to get houses. As a result, we, we see people building shacks, informal settlements, because they cannot afford to get houses. So now is there a plan from the government to help those men to get houses? Secondly, I would like to know if there's any plan to help those men eh, who are unemployed, so that they can be able to support their families? The men who live in hostels but unemployed, because they left their homes in the rural areas to find employment, however, they were unable to. So is there a plan to help those men? Thank you.
Uh, sanbonani, eh, ikamalam, ngiprotas waramgonyama, ukantela wase watte ditu eteguen. Eh, onengi, ebengzo, uku shosabekshilo, uzotesele la nje. Ugu ti, umuntu zasapota, lepili, etlo ngoswayo. Yo, ugu ti, wa angela umhlaba, ulhrez, esngawaz, kutu kabani. Eh, uhulume ni ngoku lukshesh, eh, eh, subu isale nganeno umhlaba, futige, asisona pezala mon. Eh, useni yama ngkotu wa ngiyakop, ngpatea kapsho, sugala eh, bombulu, giza ngiofiga kop. Eh, agakiu, ama eh, ama hectare, ama hectare umhlaba. Eh, siya kala, ma comrade, eh, akle komite, eh, you must move very fast eh, ukle, yo umhlaba. Eh, umuntia uzapota kaku, umteto lo, eh, otlo ngosayo. Eh, asiega Ngonyama trust, esang tokino toko kanjangi, asales implemented, kutu, ala siya bo.
Good morning, my name is Protas Gonyama, I'm the ward councillor eh, I'm, I'm, I'm a councillor in ward thirty-two in the Tagueni municipality. Much has been covered already by speakers before me, all I will do is just to emphasize, let's get this land, let's fast track, let's expropriate this land speedily. Um, we are saying, all this unused land lying around everywhere should be expropriated. I can tell you from here right up to as far as Ikopo, there is hectares upon hectares of land lying around unused. We request this bill be implemented eh, eh, speedily. Thank you.
Angbo ngituba, eh, ikamalam utembelishla wama kanya, councillor wase ward ninety-six, embombul. Eh, ngifiso uku sho ugu ti, siya uzapoto umteto eh, dengo African National Congress. Sifisengas, kuti futu uhulume ni, anga putuma kakulu, eh, okala uku sebendisa lomteto. Besen ngifisuksekani clarity, ingani, because ma ngubu ito kumenengi petela, iti expropriation. it is the expropriation bill. And I mean, I can tell you the land expropriation bill without compensation. My, I'm not a good person. So if you want to expropriation bill, you can cover it. You can tell them, you can tell them expropriation without compensation. If you saw a good person, you could support the table. As you can tell them, you can tell them you can help them. As you can tell them, you can tell them you can tell them trust. What I see, you can tell them you can tell them, you can tell them you can tell them, you can tell them.
I thank you for the opportunity. My name is Tembeli Lema Kanya. I'm a ward councillor from Ward 6. I support this bill. As the ANC, we support this bill. And I would request that you hasten the application of this bill. On my hand, I have the expropriation bill. That's what's written on this document. It's called the expropriation bill. However, I was hoping that it would be the land expropriation bill without compensation. I am not sure now whether this bill called the expropriation bill covers the land expropriation bill without compensation. Secondly, I would like to state that the land being referred to here is not land that is under the control of traditional leaders. However, it is land that was expropriated from black people in a manner that one doesn't really understand. I thank you.
Thank you, members of parliament. My name is councillor Jamil Isso from the African Christian Democratic Party. The ACDP has acknowledged the need for reformation and restitution on the land question. The question, however, is not in the why, but how. We have consistently said that expropriation without compensation is not the panache to the land question. Property rights must be protected because a failure to protect property rights and to issue title deeds to property owners destroys the value of such properties. Business and even ordinary man in the street will not invest where there is no security that assets will be protected. It is the view of the ACDP that from a legal and a constitutional perspective, it is not necessary to amend Section 25 of the Constitution and hence draft this expropriation bill as the Constitution caters for land reform quite adequately when read with the existing restitution of the land. It protects property rights and also recognizes the need for the restoration of rights to those who have dispossessed of their land. The problem lies with the implementation of the existing policy and the legislation. This failure to implement is due mainly to incompetency, mismanagement and corruption, particularly in the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform, which was highlighted by the former president Khalema Motlantle in his report. The African Christian Democratic Party would like to emphasize the need for fast resolutions to the land issue as land grabs escalate around the country. We must support many South Africans as possible to gain access to land with title deeds while protecting all property rights and ensuring that just an equitable compensation is paid for any land that is expropriated. The ACDP is committed to strengthening access to security to the tenure as well as the freedom to acquire, utilize, rent and sell property, including land. We support a just, equitable, transparent and corrupt free land restitution process, believing that when we unite, build and grow together, it is possible to enjoy a safe, healthy and prosperous South Africa. We, the ACDP, do not support this expropriation bill. Thank you.
I'm going to tell you, I'm from the town of Malongo. I'm a councillor of Ward 4, a member of the African National Congress. If you see a good person, we African National Congress, you can see, let's see, we can tell you that you can tell them, that you can tell them that you can tell them from 1955. Must update your freedom charter. From 1955 to date, it's 66 years. In fact, we're delaying, you can tell them, it's 26 years. Mobile from 1994 to date is 27 years. In fact, it's something, I support this bill, you can tell me, it's a big deal. Then if you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them that you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. So you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. Also, if you see a bad person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. So if you see a bad person, you can tell them, we clearly define, you can tell them, you can tell them, let us take on that, since you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. So if you see a bad person, you can tell them, we Lancaster talks, by clearly define, by you can tell them, but delay, we implement. So it's our time, my, you can tell me, if you see a theory, practice. See, it's a pass, it's a, it's a, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them.
I am councillor Malongo from Etugun municipality, deployed by the ANC. We just pass our gratitude to the ANC government for initiating and leading up this process. This is long overdue. Way back in 1995, the People's Parliament made it very clear that people's government will expropriate the land. Those are the wishes of the people. Therefore, as a people in Africa or South Africa, we have accommodated people that came from afar. We accommodated them. Therefore, they should not tell us how we should distribute and attribute the land. We are not talking about Ngonyama Trust land here. We are very clear. The Freedom Charter clearly defines, the longer we delay the implementation of the Freedom Charter, we may as well follow the suit of our neighbors who defined their land course but took longer to implement it. So we therefore say, this bill should be passed. This land need to be expropriated. Thank you.
If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, private property. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, then if you see a bad person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, by private property. If you see a bad person, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, if you see a bad person, you can tell them.
I thank you for the opportunity and I greet my leadership from parliament. Actually, I'm very happy to see Sislin Diwe from Gokstet, who is among us. My name is Ndombe Corner. I'm from Ward 6 and I'm married to a person from Ngangonyama. I support this bill and I would like to know the timeframe for this bill to be implemented. I am here to speak about the problem that people who live in farms face. There are many problems there because the land they live in is not their land. It is owned by other people. If you have about four children, you are asked that, you are told that you can only keep one in that farm. We have a serious problem. I myself, as a councillor, have many problems there because I am unable to deliver services to the people. You find that the land there is owned by people. We have a problem of privately owned land. We cannot even find land to bury our loved ones there because the land is owned by someone else. Sometimes you'd find that the farms get sold and then next thing you see the councillor coming to introduce a new farm owner who is a stranger to you. I humbly request that we investigate farm matters. You find that in the farms, our roofs are even leaking and we can't do anything about it because one cannot enter privately owned property. It sometimes seems as if we, as ANC councillors, are useless whereas we cannot do our job there due to issues in the farms. I request that you do return the land back to the people. Thank you.
My name is Kombozo Shetrek Zemande. Mine is simply a humble request. In our area, a farmer left deserted the farm in 2016. It's left unattended. It has got a lot of potential. It used to be productive. We want to work that land. We just request that our government may intervene and assist us quickly so that we work that land and then make it profitable again.
I come along with the power of Sosibo. I'm a progressive professional forum. I'm going to tell you, the table is long overdue. As far as 27 years later, I can tell you, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a good person, you can tell them, it's South Africa, but it's foreign owned. You can tell them, you can tell them. You must review our property rights. As you see, our property rights, I have moved the table. You can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a bad person, you can tell them, you can tell them. You can tell them, you can tell them. And if you see a bad person, you can tell them, I cannot even participate with economy. You can tell them, you can tell them. And you can tell them, you can tell them. But you can tell them, you can tell them. It's value, you can tell them. You can tell them, 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 you can tell them. If you see a bad person, you can tell them, you can tell them. 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 Ownership of the piece of land that is actually, that can even contribute to economy. You can tell them, you can tell them. If you see a bad person, you can tell them, if you see dignity, if you see livelihood. And if you see, you can tell them, you can tell them, you can tell them. Our South African citizens. Now, if you see a bad person, you can tell them, if it's finalized, the bill, you can tell them, you can tell them. As a blocker, you can tell them from implementing the bill, including the compensation without, I mean, the expropriation without compensation. Because as far as technical issues, you can tell them, you can tell them, they outright authority, executive has to carry that authority. So as you can tell me, it's an issue of transformation. It's long overdue. Ya bon.
My name is Pagati Sosibo. I am from EMF Professional Forum. This issue of, this bill is actually long overdue. It has been 20 years, 27 years now, but we are still discussing this matter. There is a need to review who actually has the property and who is benefiting from the property. There is a need to review the property rights and to see who actually benefited from this property. Black people do not have homes. Therefore, they cannot participate in the economy. The land has to be returned back to the people. And when it is returned, the issue of the value should also be looked into. We must also look at the purchase price of the land. A person must not have obtained land for just 10 rands and now sells it for 20 rands. So that should also be investigated and determine how much a person should be paid for that land. With regards to the ownership, black people do not have ownership of the land. So that matter should also be addressed. On regards, the land issue involves our dignity. It involves our livelihood. Therefore, South Africans should be able to own the land. Finally, the purpose of this bill, when the bill is finalized, they must also stress or focus on the purpose of the bill and there should be nothing that really hinder the government from being able to expropriate land. And when that is done, it should not include compensation. Thank you. Transformation is long overdue. Thank you.
Thank you so much to all our speakers.
If you see a good person, you can tell them.
We wanted to give two Amakosi, but I noticed that they are out. We will request our local mayor, councillor Mkize.
Yes, no, Sbengele Slado. I'm from the town of Parlamenta. I'm from Kongolos. And I'm going to tell you, I'm going to tell you. I'm going to tell you. I'm from Kongolos. I'm the head of the hall. Councillor of ANC, Bobo. A former councillor of this ward. I'm from the town of Ntiti Elwesensizwa, I'm from Natali. I'm from Zamakos. I think it's important that we raise these four issues. One, so that our colleagues understand it very clear this time around. There's no need for a delay on this matter. The games that are being played at our National Assembly, there's no time for it. Government of the ANC is to develop people. There's no land. You can't spend our budget, there's no land. Nobody came with the land in this country. No one. So we do not owe it to anyone irrespective of their color. The land belonged to us. So we should not be ashamed. We should not be using the constitution as an excuse to own our land because we are scared of them. This is purely our land. If by any mistake it's sitting with them, they need to rent it from us. Because we still do trust in the employees in government of the ANC, which is our government. You need to tackle this ASAP before we take over this land issue. Because we are tired of our government being criticized. They can't create jobs because we don't have land. We do have land. We can show you tomorrow morning that you have land. They are confused, asking if you identify the land. It's our land. We know which pocket of land that you want to develop our people. They're not going to query or ask us. We just have to inform them. This is the land that you're going to use for this, for our people. If they want to join us to be developed, they must come in. If they exclude themselves, that's their own baby. But we must not be apologetic about this matter. Particularly to the minority. As for the Christians, their job is simply voluntarily clear. They need to pray for this government to do justice. They cannot be this confused. Currently, they are confused. Coming and standing here and saying you are opposing. What kind of a Christian are you? Opposing people of their own rights, of their own land. You are definitely confused. You should spend more time focusing at church and make sure that justice is done properly and pray for that.
Your time is up.
In closing, Chair. The land belonged to us and we still do trust in our government.
Your time is up, Councillor. Thank you.
All protocols were observed by the mayor and much was said in English except for this one that I will say now. It says, "No need for the delay on this matter." Thank you.
Only 10 hands and then we close. But this side, because we... Number one. Number four. Okay, number five, next to you. Number five. Number six. Number seven. Number seven. Number eight, yeah. Number eight, La Paya. Do we have 10? We need only one more. Oh, okay. Thank you. This is the last group. Just a reminder. You have only 3 minutes. You state your name. You tell us whether you support or you oppose the bill. And the reasons. This is the last group. So no one, we're going to invite him ahead to speak now. Thank you.
Yeah, well, yeah, well. I'm going to say to Sussimbi Simon Ngobane. I'm going to say to the councillor, I'm going to say 15, what?
Oguuti butate indoba bebe tunyelwe ngufulumeni bebe tunyelwe organizationa ANC Nazrec ogubagutatwe itisijin yoguba kwenze wera radical economic transformation. Ndi bolele obalepili lena ise apagutin intanda oba paya kuklo seven apaguyolepili. Kubegwe kutate oba without compensation. Kunga bekulogo kutwa compensation ton ton aybe kwenye. Oba umxaba ofumane engenzela engke koka gusli. No umxaba owa funyanwa ngela creche loba ntsulule owa utatwa ngengayo umteto oba ntsulule. Ma obe without compensation ubuisile ban twi. Gumsingiza Hathebe lopam gwenu opuma kui African National Congress ku Wat sixty nine. Kuleni night u branch and kui organization i youth with a voice, i NPO one nine five nine one five. Ditse ogunye kutipaya kutetwa ngendaba ye ye public interest kuma terms we build. Bengela kubegwe kutate oba maketwa ngi public interest kutetwa ngi interest ezobenifita uluntu. Hay oba guzo benifita umtu tile ozofiga epesuka kwenyilizwe azoti hay i public interest abeso benefit. Gumxaba waban tu ma kubeyi public interest i apo konasiti. Avaro benefits guo ba ngu umtu oxlala konanapo. Meni kunga bikoko namxamba hay gogo bazo kenya maskils. Ha ha yonke imalia konanayo yonki into ezobay benefiti paya ise ban twi. Ndi bolele kakulu ndipinda ditse makue duwai i term paya eti benefit i define wenga. Lenzelendi ichiloyo paya kui term. Ipili singu wat sixty nine on tumileyo no African National Congress si ayamkeela siti makujwe nayo. Siabolela.
I greet the chairperson and I greet everyone in presence here in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. I thank you for the opportunity that you have given me and I thank you for coming here with this bill. I thank the leadership for actually applying what we spoke about at Nazrec. The decision that was taken about radical transformation. We can see that now. I'm going to refer to clause seven which speaks about without compensation. I think that the land should be returned without compensation. Land was expropriated in a different manner during apartheid time. Therefore, it should be returned without compensation. My name is Mzingiza Hathebe. I am from the ANC Wat sixty nine laleti branch. I am from the youth and the voice organization one nine five one nine five. With regards to public interest mentioned in the bill, I think there is a need for clarification of the public interest. You need to specify who this public interest will, who are the beneficiaries of this public interest. Because people who are not from the area should not benefit. People who are not from the country should not benefit from this, from this public interest. And this, in this bill should not benefit individuals but should benefit citizens. Because this is the people's land. Also, with regards to public interest, I believe that locals should benefit from this. And they should not only be given skills but everything that has to do with that land should be given to them, including money and everything else. I think there is also a need to define benefits, what you mean by benefits. I am from Wat sixty nine. I am an ANC member and we support this bill. We would like you to continue with it. Thank you.
Chairperson, nen vionke angengelele. Ika mangutam nguakazaka. A member of ANC Mkungundovu district. Ilo kali omkambati owa two i branch. Eh, ti nasi district nje ne branch yonke omkambati. Sizo isegi pili. Okay, sizo isegi pili. Ngentaye otwa nje eti sinengwa geti indawesiza kele indawo e na maplazi. Ugutholuguti abantu, bani nginge oguti abawazu ktholi zina. Utholuguti indawo ikona mola nde oguti twi indawo ikabani indawo ikonjungu muntwase rash. Abafue thulaba kontra thwaya bano umxaba traba na umxaba bano twenty percent. Omxaba utholuguti eighty percent umxaba ukontwa ban daba outside. And when success faila ukenzi development nje ngentanga ANC is tholuguti. Iplu peti jaloke iputi attacke klo kuguti ti na asutafeila. Bengzotige ngobutremini ti nani sizo isegi pili ti na njengomkungundovu.
Thank you so much. I'd like to greet the chair, members of the committee and the community at large. I am a member of the ANC. I'm from Watu. I am from Omkabati branch. My name is Tamsang Azaka. In our area where I am from, we are located in a place where we are surrounded by farms. And you find that in our area, we can't get housing. We can't get houses simply because on the bases and on the grounds that there is, there is no land. And when you probe, you find out that the owners, the set owners of the land are people residing up there in Russia. They are not even here, but they are the owners of the land where we stay. So, we requested this bill be passed on behalf of my branch. We are supporting this bill. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chairperson of the portfolio committee on public works infrastructure, members of the committee, councillors, Isindunas and all protocol observed. I would like to, to say, my name is Ntorosi Sinwane, a member of our clearness movement, the African National Congress. I am here to say we are seconding the bill because it has been long overdue. We go to conferences, we go to conferences and try to make sure that we, we put these bills, but the implementation is lacking. But now we are pleased about what is happening. At the moment in time, a lot has been done, has been said by my colleagues. And then I'm here to say we support the bill. And then I'm coming from Katomena. In Katomena, we are known as a place where there are so many shacks. It not because we are, we've got so many shacks because we are unable to, to purchase the material from wherever we can purchase materials. The problem is land. We are having so many shacks and then we have, we've got plenty of land. That is said to be, that is said it belong to someone who is not with us. We've got Rosefontaine nearby Westwell Correctional Services, which was meant to be, to be a place to build a housing for people of Katomena. At the end, we only found that that area belonged to someone who left one, one lizard to own that land. And then people, Africans, blacks in particular, left stranded without a, a, a place to build houses. Our councillor found it difficult to deliver to the people of South Africa, to the people of Katomena because of that land. Rosefontaine is a big land that can accommodate almost half of the, half of Watu twenty four. But we are unable to deliver for the people because someone who is not, who does not care about black people, who cares only, that means that that land, that people think that a lizard is better than a black person to get a decent shelter or decent housing to, to be built on behalf of that person. That person has taken that land and then given to the lizard. And people of Katomena are left stranded without shelter, without houses. Our councillor found it's very difficult to deliver for the people of Watu twenty four. So, with this bill, we fully support this bill and then we are about to take it on. If it can, if it can come out now, we can take it on because it has been long overdue. We support this bill as people of Watu twenty four. Thank you.
We requested our government intervene for us on this land issue. Help us to return the farms and also help us with the fencing of the farms. When you cut the farms at least so that you are able to, to fence them so that you may protect our produce. Thank you.
Akfanele umbuzo wotujobantseleza kweni nisizala nganukubekwazi uta kwenzo alut. Kiela emakanteli, number three. Amakantela azakine se tache kaga ba makantela ngati umpaga tawawunagile kanti. Ugovernmenta iki ndakai tilifa makantela yogwenze. Isintongeska thokfanele zenzwe ngasu empaga tinilo umpaga ti ogu wonovotele ANC abe uyana kelle wanga so songeska. Number four. Ugovernmentu etesnaye, usakele isintu zemkaso. Isintaga sakela zona zomkaso ngia ibonga zeni. Azina awamanzi, azina mapapeanzi, azina amataitezi. Logofanele ngutaboban tu baslele ndane ngazazi ukute zoban. Enda wene sikzona kthula nasi akuluma kthula unengonyama trust. Koti ngonyama trust abanguti ngonyama trust akfanele ngabe isintese ndelo zona nyanga nabantu abanbi sholo. Zibalula wetu manje kitola ngati sitledpansi asinagegi isintese kulayo. Azenzeki lutwa kwa makantela faino utatulwa ngoba makantela ayaza umpaga tiniko dizinda es kume umpaga tin. Ayiki divari, iti delivery ngakama ngeska thokfanele ngabienzeka. Kela ngati lokongenzeka kubeyi onipo sishonpege sbadala nasi ngaga siswa nu enzi, enzi kdalagabi. Sese se amakela namtse iskukile sese ama veteranka ANC. Koti wene isintese ibuga es ngako right. Kela ngati sikhaza sibano klasu nyendu wene zenzawzon. Ngoba lizele ti paye la pana gumshuma elten. Uvest eight, vest nine. Omba umkuti uyonge naguona lo umkuti noti rizi thwalwa uyokudze zela lelo thwalwa. Kanti nomba mach uyoklawa yela omachi. Nanige nyangaya na lapuma oguti isintesho umpaga tenwaziyo. Ani nagege ngia bon.
My name is Alfios Ngalah. Thanks to all those who have contributed on this matter, I must say that I am a bit shocked or disappointed at my organization, the ANC who is in power. How can our organization be in power and yet begin to ask outsiders on internal matters that should be resolved and, 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 and deliberated by, by family? Year in, year out, our government sends us delegates to come and discuss one and the same thing. Let us rather accelerate the service delivery of our people. Another issue of concern is the RTP houses. The RTP houses that the government builds and, and gives us have no water and have no tightly deeds. So you stay there for years, you still like a tenant, yet it is said that you, you own the place but there is no proof to show. Another matter is the Ngonyama Trust. Ngonyama Trust should be more favorable to us, towards us, the black people. It should prioritize us. We can't be in Ngonyama Trust land and fail to access the services or some benefits as, as, as black people. Also, we are now veterans of the ANC. We were born in the ANC, we've been in the ANC forever, you know. So we need you to increase your speed in, 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 in accelerating these matters. The Bible says, I am sure it's applicable to you also. The Bible says, whosoever digs in the pit, the same way he shall fall into it. So that will be your portion if you don't deliver this land issue. Thank you.
I greet you all. My name is Mosatonsa. I'm from Cockstod at Pendemonde. I'm just a member of an ANC and thanks for the opportunity that I have given. We are facing the difficulties in the farm. You can't even imagine that I'm twenty four years now staying in the place without electricity, running water, toilets because of the owners who don't allow the facilities from the government. We are educated, we have skills, but we don't have land to work on. We, we are very suffering in the place that we come from. Even if I estimate seventy five thousand of people stay there are unemployed because the farmworkers restrict the numbers of the employees. Instead of, for example, instead of sixteen workers to work on, they only take four workers. We are really suffering. We are begging the government to re-enter and take over these challenges that we are facing on. Secondly, we are very struggling when it comes to the graveyard. We have to go from our word to another word to bury the part of the members. Thanks so much.
Engi suguma noguti ngivumela ni noguti lomtezo obe wai. Galant expropriation without compensation. Kuzelulu without compensation oba ngubona ngala fawitpili. So, ipili futi ngibe ilunga le wat committee empaga tin. Eh, umpaga tin kambanga guona. Unesa kwele sese zo forum bakta la babega tiba kwele goskatso ban zulule. Ni na ngisuzula nese sibiliku labo forum. Senzele na mabana mabamtoang kulo forum. Nabantuana bamfutsese benengan. So labo forum usminkie ne gbona asinazo isindauzo waka. Sesi sese sa pokeka ma nyamaluunga omden wuz apume ayowaka imichondolo. Lento imichondolo ika kulu kazi klianda we engisuka giona ibona banta ba puma go forum. Ngoba uforum bakwele asguazu wane la abantuana bayo umden uyanda. So ke bengsakela nje kuhulumenwe tu ukuti uma usso upasi ile lomtezo. Okshugani so komxaba anga bakosa ba go forum. Me abase sakiwe. Ngoba ay impela sila hliwa impela asinaro gishinda we gwa kubega nje ingadi ekre genju kutu uzchalele espina shuno ma amavich nje amangani. So ke siyakta leguti uma ngabe so upasi ile lomtezo. Ngoba engatu zo upasi zo upasi sasiso kumela leguti upasi so klueli. Ngoba ababewutatile kti na babewutatengenduzula. So ke kti na ke we will not stop that law oguti nasi suzatengenduzula. UANC usfundisile oguti isintu sisenzengenzela. So ke ngia kta leguti uhulumenwe tu uma ngabe esesugani so ntxaba anga bakosa ban tu basere blmalokshini naboba yautingo ntxaba ngia bon.
My name is Figile Young. My surname is Young. I am from Wat eighty eight at Umla Zee under councillor Kasa. I support the Bill of Land Expropriation Without Compensation. I will emphasize that it is, should be without compensation. I'm a ward committee member. I live in a four room house, the old houses that were built by apartheid governments. I'm a second generation living in this four room house. Now I have my own children and my children have their own children. We're all living in this four room house. There are no buildings for us. I mean, there is no land where we can build our houses. As a result, some of our family members moved out and went to build shacks. There is a community of people living in shacks because they had to move out of these four room houses because families are growing. When this adds, or this bill is passed to an add, I request that the government, may they please, remember people who live in four room houses and those who live in informal settlements. We do not have space to even plant a vegetable garden where we can plant spinach or other vegetables. When the bill is passed, may they please remember that those, we do remember that those who took it, took forcefully. However, the ANC taught us that we should do things the proper way. So I request that when the bill is passed, could the government please remember the people who live in townships as well? I thank you.
Usandile mkhunu lo. Komga famu twenty nine i Katomena. Ogui ANC. Engisoosega umteto. Logutatwa imkumxaba. But, itrela oguti ngisofa ispameso uthuti imkumxaba eh anda kui kuma emakosin ingatin do. Eh, no kunyoguti ekatomena tina sinaile imkumxaba epilo ngakuwena i, 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 ingonyama. Eh, estanda ngonjongo ba ikatomena ingapantikwe i, i, inama kuku. So siyakta ela oguti ingatin deki ingonyama. Ogunye, imkumxaba angekseka ngengayo oguti kineskala zo sukuti. Una banta batatola imkumxaba kala betatela o ngriwa. Abana agwa bon. Nabangala guthba konti itwe abatatala nje ngasi chasta vil nje abasuswenda unyabwa posale malokshin gude. Nabangala guthba kachanga lenoba ohulumenka ta enzi process ngendaba ya abo. Koti ngaveli sibulule. Utsho tu bashonisale abanyase bezabashona sakselingan. Abanyase beyakula bantabatala bawarishwa ielendu. Guti kanganane nganuhulumenye abebiza aga kipisi sibulule. Aga kama ne tisijin guti benzenja ndabo ban. Ogunye, ngisaseka usisi lokal te akpumala oguti uhulumeni aga staba ngele uma guthese itatilele imkumxaba. Ukala siyakta nduklima ngengayo oguti isimo sika nje na njoba gnokhovit nje. Kfunesu besi ichalele ti ni ichalo. Sigwazu guti, sigwazu guti une entzumiako, sigwazu kila ngoni. Ovest bili sipela oguti nezinto abantu akeli zinto kule imkumxaba letatwa yonge ngayo oguti. Yabona ditina suka enda wene ya ma flat. La ma flata o one bedroom. Sina twenty years is talakon. Sine ingane, ne ingane. So kfuni kachanga ngela ba ban du oguti uneni ndau e corner la pekatomen e ilheli. Njoba kwa kwele la ma flat nje wangeni ndawo ya ilheli waktu wakso kwele ma ni. Na ma nja kaza zakiw. Imxambe sebe kaba ngazi nyizi ndawo zo zakha. Koti kubego okoneni nini ndawo waktu face two. So estalut uhulumeni aypegeli ndenje ngalezo. Banga mmtontisana beno maspala ngoba bano mmtontisana ngaliyo ndawo. So zonke naleza, nalezi ndawo wasuswa ba bataliso matinini. Estalut ba kachanga ngela batoleli ndawo e right. Ngobi ndawo ngeko right. Na ma nalezi ezze imichondolo. Batoleli ndawo egathlezi ezne mbi lu. Siabon.
Greetings to you all in all your respective ranks. My name is Zandile Mkhunu. I am from Wat twenty nine. I also represent the ANC. I support the expropriation bill fully, but I also need to state traditional land, especially that, that is under Ngonyama Trust should not be tempered with. We, we're not talking about that one. Here in Katomeno, we have a lot of surrounding land. A lot of it also in Ngonyama Trust and a lot of it not part of the Ngonyama Trust. So we support this expropriation bill without compensation. And where there is, there is also people, we need you to note that there are people whose land was taken long time ago. It's like government has forgotten about those people. People like from, people, people, people like, like people from Chesterville. It's like we, we, we've forgotten about them. They claimed long time ago, many have passed on, many have died, but they, we have, we haven't seen any progress there. We also want to plant our own crops in our own yards where we stay, but we don't have land. So, because we also need to eat organic and healthy food. Right now, we live in one bedrooms. Our families are growing one bedroom flats, our families are growing. We don't have inner space. We are so squashed and pressed in those small houses. We are asking for further housing development schemes. And also remember those people in Lindela centers, those temporal tin houses where people were put and those living in shacks. Let's find the land and make provision for people to inhabit. Thank you.
Sanbonane, ika malam dumzwa matoto mkize, disuka ekokstate. Bengelukuzala kuhulumeni oguba nje ngemna dikulele e plazi kaza lele plazi. Gazenda sebenza kuli plazi lelo. Umnikazwenda watu yakamba kakuluma naye oguba e plazi. Ugovernmenta bengelukutangtenke watu umnikazwenda angnati gringaken wasu kthula e plazi. Go bengelukuzuka ba indau itolwa ngabantu abafundile na no ba abantu bangafundanga. Siabon.
I greet you all. My name is Muzi Wamatoto mkize. I am from Cockstod. I have a question to the governments. I was born and I grew up and I worked in a farm. The owner told me that he was leaving and then I told him that I would ask the government to please purchase that land for me or the farm for me. And he said he was refusing to sell. Now my question is, is it only people are educated that are able to get farms? Thank you.
Siabon kaka kulu kupobonge abakaze isinvozabo.
We thank you all who came to voice your views.
As this portfolio committee.
Nje ngaleliko committee lenzelchi amteto.
We taking all your views concerning the bill.
Yonki mbono yenu se tata se palapansi jonge kondi nomtso swivinyo.
After the last province that will visit.